These meetings to order, first in order of business, pledge allegiance.
Recording in progress.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any changes, additions, or removals to the agenda?
We can strike number nine, please.
Is that?
Black River Overlook.
Town?
Hmm?
Is that town?
Um, yes and no, it's just because, so the Black River Overlook, they're trying to install a water line through, from the top of Doug Road down to El Rublee Lane to supply water, which is fine, but they are trying to secure funding through outside forces, grants, funds, et cetera, and they have to hold a public hearing themselves because, and they were going to come before the select board last night, which is canceled, and then come before. They just need a letter of support from the boards to say, yeah, this is a, it won't put any strain on their system, which it won't, um, so when we get to that, we will, we'll do it.
Okay. Now approved minutes from previous meetings, August 5th and August 12th.
August 5th, I just have a, um, a couple on page three.
On this, on this?
On page three.
Which meeting?
August 5th.
5th.
Page three, on letter capital E, the small letter D, just take out one of the asked.
Huh?
On, right here, it says, Jolene Cole, ask clarified.
Oh.
That's all, just a little, and there's only one other one in there. Um, on the bottom, on the capital A, number four, Justin hijacked, it just should be as instead of asked, the last two percent words.
This, Clay Roll, add a correction as well, under section nine, A, part six, it was a hundred dollars a day instead of a month.
What page is that on?
Page three.
Oh, okay.
And Lisa, some of them, my name is spelled wrong, which isn't a big deal, but I just want to tell you that there's like four times it's N-I-C-H-O-L.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, there's like, yeah, four, four of them there, just a little, nothing big. You're right, some are fine. I'll make a motion anyway, except, August 5th, that's corrected.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anything on August 12th?
No, one page, I make a motion, except, and as written, August 12th.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Comments from citizens?
I'm just here for, uh, for the allocation for, uh, 126 Route 66.
Okay, that'll, that'll be coming up.
Yep, right way.
I see no other comments, um, allocation review, and, and possibly approve.
So we have the first one, which is One Prospect Street for John and Lisa Kuzman, Kuzin, um, that will be an additional hook-on fee, converting an existing barn into a three-bedroom unit, um, Joe has reviewed, as have I, signed off, um, with the appropriate allocation and hook-on fees.
I just had one question, Brendan, on that, um, when they're, they're going from like a three or four, to four or five units, when do they kick in the sprinkler system, like?
Anything, I believe that's over eight, what, eight or 12, yeah, it's not, it's not in the, uh, has to be, and that's a fire marshal.
Yeah, I just wondered about how that kicks in. I know we have room in here, I just was saying, because we have a three unit, and they said if we went to four, we had to sprinkle in our whole building, and I know that's not our job as a trustee, but does somebody notice that, would somebody?
It would be part of the permitting too, for fire safety, to get a CO.
That's what I was asking, that's all, thank you. I'll make a motion that we approve One Prospect Street for a three-bedroom unit.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is 126 Route 66, adding a one-bedroom unit over the attached garage, it would be with a separate hook-on, um, again, Joe has reviewed this, um, as have I, allocation fees and hook-on fees are indicated at the bottom, seems to be, uh, no issues there.
Make a motion, unless you'd like to speak on your behalf?
Um, I, I'll answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good luck.
Easy, easy. Um, last is a increase in seating for the Keeneland Group LLC, which is the location, which is known as the Blue Duck Deli, they are increasing from 25 seats to 44 seats, this is really more just an administrative note in approval, because as they are increasing in seats, they are decreasing in meals per day, so their consumption actually decreases, um, so there's no request for any additional consumption.
Can you make a motion to approve?
I'll second that, and I know I've said it before, but it's only for, this has nothing to do with parking or anything else, and they still want to go to zoning, and I, I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Department have reports?
Um, Mr. McNamara?
Sure.
For the monthly reports of the Village of Bloodlust Sewer Department, I would humbly request that we have comped for last year.
We've done that before.
Yeah.
And that looks great, and thank you to the wastewater department.
I, I had one question, um, says we shipped out no sludge in August, is that, is that normal?
I believe so, just as a, you know, the, then in July, August is kind of the slower time, you know, consumption, uh, and the inflow goes down, so the need to get the sludge out is not as important.
And where I see we're getting, our pump inspections, our pump stations inspected?
Yes.
Good.
Yep.
No cost to us. Aged receivable report.
So you have the original aged receivable report with you, so, um, which is, you know, fairly good shape on some fronts, um, we did turn some water off last week and week before, which spurred some folks to come in and take care of their outstanding balances, some of the larger balances on here, and we're really looking at sewer, um, for this portion is somewhere on payment agreements that we were able to put together, but in front of you, did I pass?
Yes, yes, yes.
Lisa, you have one from the, of the last meeting, right now, so, that paper you have in front of you, has the list of sewer balances, which outstanding is 27,788 dollars and 39 cents, um, some of them are, been long, you know, have, there hasn't been payments since 2020, some are just two payments that were missed, um, the question that is before the board is, how do you, would you like us to proceed with this, there are a couple options, you can place liens on the property, which then essentially would be sent to our attorney for tax sale purposes as well, um, as you're aware, there's one on here, which is the bottom unit, um, which is 143 Main Street, which is the convenience store formerly known as 7-Eleven.
Oh, okay.
Um, the conversations I had with the owner of that property today is that they have a rental, the water has been shut off there, um, and the, the email I sent to the company today, because we have had zero correspondence with them, um, was that we were going to proceeding, contacting the state, trying to, you know, proceed as that is a public safety hazard, et cetera, um, it's amazing how fast somebody will call you back when you, so, um, they've been sent these balances and are going to pay them, they claim that they're going to have a new renter in there within two weeks, but I told them that, one, it's, you know, there's food left inside, there's no electricity, um, it's probably not in the best condition, but also with no water or sewer, with your balances still outstanding, some of the property taxes have not been paid, you're not getting your utilities turned back on, nor are you getting any liquor licenses, um, so, I'm holding, I'm holding out hope that they're going to pay that, if someone's really going to be moving in there, but on the other side of things, the, you know, the 10 properties or so above that, you know, those are your options, because we cannot just turn off, when it's just wastewater, we don't have an option of turning the water off, which becomes difficult.
I will speak for myself, um, I don't traditionally like liens, I don't want the government to get a property due to a delinquent sewer bill, or have it go to an auction, so I would be searching for alternative options, and I wrote a few of them down, um, one is inline sewer plugs, inflatable bladders at the manhole, to prevent the sewer from actually functioning, uh, we could look at coalition with the water commissioners, and see what recourse we have with those guys, uh, we could also try to impose additional daily fines if they are not remedied in an expedited manner, or at least set up a payment plans. I would consider placing a lien as the absolute last resort, of which something I don't support.
I guess my question, I, I understand what you're saying, um, is, the sewers aren't working with no water, correct?
Correct, but our, our problem, I think with some of these, that they're not on municipal water, they're on a well, so we don't have, they just, they don't have, so, there are some places in town that are connected to the wastewater, but water doesn't go there, so we're not obviously able to touch somebody's well, um, yeah, so that, that, because otherwise, if they had, if they were just paying their water and they didn't, not their wastewater, we just shut the water off, um, but unfortunately, that's.
It would be my opinion to task the town manager, or maybe some, um, members of the water commission and the wastewater commission, us, to speak with the department head at the wastewater department, and see what kind of solutions we can come up with, before placing liens on properties. And I know this has been an ongoing, uh, discussion at this board for quite some time, um, but, that's my.
I think the only, the only thing you're going to get any movement is, is placing a lien on, um, some of them have been outstanding for.
Years.
Eleven years.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
I mean, there's one that has been, the allocation was paid to, to get, to get it, and that was in 2020, and not, and haven't paid anything.
Right.
For uses.
I, I just think, I mean, these, these are all pretty outstanding, uh, and I understand your thought, and I don't really like the thought of taking somebody's property for $12,000, but we also need to get that, that money to run the sewer plan.
It's absolutely not fair to the other taxpayers in this town.
And when the delinquent went like that, does, does the interest add up to the, to the, yeah?
Uh, Mr. McNamara?
Mm-hmm.
Account 531005, on page three.
Mm-hmm.
Wasn't that forgiven?
Part of it.
And that's already reflective in here, thank you for the clarification.
Um, so what's the, how's the board feel about putting liens on, or?
I don't think it would hurt to do Justin's plan for one month and ask, because I don't know much about this stuff enough, to know what other towns do, and maybe the wastewater, they'll be able to tell us.
I mean, I would be more than happy to investigate what other options are, I mean, I'm not even sure, do you know if like an inline sewer plug is even an option?
I did speak with the wastewater director today briefly, and he informed me that at the manhole level, it would be possible, and also, uh, his crew could, in certain circumstances, dig up to access the sewer pipe.
My only, and I guess that would be some, I'm more than happy to investigate it, I just don't, the other side of that is, what kind of a self-imposed health hazard could we, uh, create by doing that?
Good point.
Um, you know, so, again, I'm, I'll, I'll, you know, we will, we're gonna, we'll begin the process to place the liens, move things out forward, but I will also look at the other options before we press go on either one of them, um, and then we can revisit that.
I would also like to speak with the water commissioners, or have you obviously speak with them, and just gauge, uh, what a coalition would look like to better the village.
Sure.
Um, in my opinion, lien should be of absolute last recourse, once all other options are exhaustive, I'm, I, you know, that's just my feeling.
I mean, if they have, you know, with these two, they've, it's just like with property taxes, they've been notified time and time and time again, and, um, part of it is, you know, a payment or two, some of them, you look at, like, okay, there's $400, $300, is it probably, was it bugging us to put, go through the time and the effort to deal with an attorney, um, for that amount of someone who missed a payment? No, but again, then, when you're looking at $12,000 for, for units that have never paid, not a dime.
That is more of a, that's a different story.
I agree.
Most that I see, there are a few in the few thousand-dollar range, um, most are not that egregious.
No, but you have 11,000, 2,000, 6,000, 2,000.
Yep, and I think somebody that's, you know, $9,000 in arrears for over 120 days, is a different exploration.
Correct.
Um, but, I, I guess before, I would consider putting the listed ones up for liens, I would want to exhaust the other options.
Sure, and I can, I'll proceed with both, just so we have all of our options.
And I'm sorry to, you know, drag this out, but.
Not at all.
You looking for a motion one way or another?
More than.
Census.
Excuse me, I hear the board norms, are we allowed to ask questions about these topics, or do we have to wait to this specific topic to ask questions?
No, it is, just if you raise your hand, um, hand that way, I'll keep an eye on it, just so we know, that's not.
So the Zoom folks know, we have Okemo Valley TV managing this, uh, online meeting, so any questions that you have, please direct to them, and also raise your hand if you would like to speak, thank you.
Did you have something you wanted to say, Scott?
I did, I, I want to know what the total cost is as a community, it seems like we're throwing numbers around 12,000, 6,000, you know, what is the cost to our community? What's the total cost, why is it five years that somebody's not paying bills? I think a lien should be put on those properties, that's an exorbitant amount of time and a ridiculous amount of money.
So the total outstanding between the accounts that are, let's see, one, two, five, six, seven, eight, nine, between the 12 accounts that are listed here, Scott, the total outstanding is 27,788 dollars and 39 cents.
That's pretty significant money.
It is.
And I, and I think that the board is taking that pretty lightly, I don't know why, but it seems like they're just putting, you know, it's not important, five years of not paying your bills sends a message to everybody in this community, that we don't need to pay bills for the next five years.
Mr. Corbett, I would respectfully ask you to reframe that, I think what it shows is that we don't want to kick people out of their homes for unpaid water bills.
However you see it, five years is a unmanageable amount of time for a community to absorb that cost.
Thank you for your input.
And I question the ethics, and I question those ethics, honestly.
Thank you.
Eric, you have a question?
Eric, go ahead. Hey, thanks, I'm, my apologies for not being in person, just curious, um, if the board has a policy, you know, on this, um, from attending all these meetings over the years, it seems like a lot of these items are sort of left to, um, you know, a feeling or, um, you know, a situation where it's sort of being decided on the, on the spot, and that, and that puts some folks in a, you know, on the, you know, on the spot at the time, um, I'm curious why there isn't a, a policy, a collection policy, you know, if you get to a certain amount of triggers, if you get to a certain time that that's triggered, and you're following a policy, as opposed to, you know, personal thoughts on, on it, you know, similar to the tax situation, um, you know, in placing a lien, doesn't mean anyone's going to lose their home, but it does give the town some protection on, on being able to get those funds, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alden. Mr. McNamara, would you kindly tell the board what steps we've taken already to try to mitigate these, and how successful it has been?
So from the, excuse me, from strictly dealing with the wastewater side of things, you know, we, we contact, every, every owner that has an outstanding balance is contacted, notified of their balance, if they're on water in wastewater, they are faced with water shut-off, which we have done, and we do on a regular basis, um, as we said, there has never been a practice that I, I was aware of here, that has put liens on properties, or even, you know, by state statute, we are within our rights to send these properties to tax sale, um, we died, did it in Cavendish, um, so, but that is, there is not, to Mr. Alden's point, there is not a written statutory process that we, we, we do that here, there's no 30, 60, 90 days, and that, you know, 120 days, we're coming with the wrench to turn their water off, or et cetera, that's not written in stone here, um, because, yes, you know, there are extenuating circumstances for, um, different situations, and part of that is what my job is tasked with, you know, dealing with some of those extenuating circumstances, um, someone, you know, I'll come back to it, someone who has been out of work, and, you know, or had a medical thing there, um, that's, that's an issue, that is, you know, missed two payments, that is a different story than someone who hasn't paid their bill in five years, um, absolutely, um, I think it's something that needs, we know, we can look at in terms of saying, all right, this is, but these are things too, that you can put those policies in place, but this needs to be cleaned up as well, again, this is going back years, um, and I'll just, you know, I'll go on record in saying, if you look at our aged receivables for this town over the last two or three years, they, it's night and day, we've done phenomenal.
Amazing.
Collecting the funds that we, that we, that we're owed, um, and that's a tribute to, you know, to our office, and being on top of people, working with people with payment agreements, because things are hard, you know, like, I am the one person that is not going to say, great, you know, you need to pay us $500, and somebody's going to say, no, well, okay, I'll do it, but if they can't pay it, and they don't, can't make that money, it's not good for anybody, um, but we need to, once we get to a point where everything is ground zero, to be honest with you, that needs to be looked at, is, this is where, and then, then we're accountable, because it's tough to be accountable for a bill that's, you know, for anyone that's five or six years old, you know, that, that's, that's hard, you're chasing a lot, yeah, but I will say that being able to look at some of these numbers, knowing where we came from, two, three years ago, is, is very good, but that doesn't, that doesn't mean it's perfect, by any means.
Thank you.
Somebody has their hand up.
Lauren?
Hey, everyone, thanks for the time, um, I just wanted to kind of go off of what the last gentleman mentioned about policies, again, I know you can't like necessarily always stick hard and fast to those, but I do wonder, given the conversation you're having about people's feelings about liens or no liens, and people losing their homes and all of that, like, if, you may want to consider a policy, just to kind of outline what you, what you've been saying, right, like, you've made all this progress in all these years.
I think we lost you.
She mirrored herself, he said.
Sorry, you lost me, um, yeah, what I was just saying is, you know, I, I think a policy moving forward might be a good idea, once you explore those options, I think it's good to explore, you know, the alternative to liens as well, but I do think moving forward, having a standard, like Eric mentioned, might be a good idea, might help you hold people accountable, even more going into the future, it sounds like you've made a lot of progress, but you want to be able to continue to do that without having all these dark conversations about feelings.
Thank you, Lauren.
Is it possible to have people identify where they're, I mean, if they're, they live in the village, or where they're from, usually when people get up to talk, they say where they're, is that just upstairs, we do that?
No, I don't, but I, part of our, I mean, you can ask, but a part of our, um, adopted rules of procedure, that isn't part of it, we didn't, you know, realistically, I believe they're in part of it, like, we know, but they, people don't need to identify them, so.
Okay, I'm just asking, because upstairs, upstairs people, you just say who they are. But, thank you.
What's your feeling?
Well, I, I think, I think we pursue both, he's going to talk about putting a lien on.
We'll exhaust the last options, and then we'll pursue liens after.
Yep, I will move forward on both fronts.
Thank you.
Okay, village trustees to review and consider action steps pertaining to rental registry.
So this was a agenda item after our public hearing on, I believe it was the 12th, um, a lot of feedback, a lot of public feedback, very well attended, so this was kind of put on here as not to, say to, um, a final step, but, you know, the select board had the same agenda item last night, unfortunately, due to unforeseen circumstances, that meeting was canceled, so, it was really just the steps as to where this board wants to go with the registry process, um, you know, there was a lot of input, there's been a lot of, um, you know, a lot of public discussion at the last meeting regarding, um, some of the public input, which I thought was very good, but now it just kind of circles back to the boards to decide exactly what the next step in this process is, and what that's going to look like.
When is the merger meeting, Mr. Reckman?
17th for the village, in the, or excuse me, 17th. Seventeenth for the village in the, or excuse me, seventeenth for the town and the eighteenth for the village. And then again, October first. What was that?
I couldn't hear it.
Yeah, so seventeenth and eighteenth and then the first and the second, again, in October.
October one and two?
Yes, we have to have them.
Well, I'm going to say how I feel about the registry and that can be where it is. I'm not, I'm not for a rental registry. I know we're talking about safety. I don't think it's going to change anything. Apparently the state knows who's renting. They're charging them 3%. So then our 1% is going to get tacked on. The rules are in place, the safety's in place. It's an impossible thing to enforce. I don't, I don't see, people are still going to sneak people into houses. And they're, they're going to have a bunch of people there. The one good thing would be to know upfront if there was a fire or something, who owned the properties, but, you know, if, if it's about education and safety, put a page on a town website with the rules and regs that we're supposed to do. That's my feeling.
Do you have a question as well?
Scott.
Okay, there it is up top. I saw it floating.
I see it floating.
Sorry. I was also giving you a thumbs up. I have a question, but I'll let the whole entire board give their opinions, I guess, first. I just want to bring everybody's attention to the sign that's behind you and hope that everybody's following that model.
Go ahead.
Hi, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear part of what was said at the last comment. Can you repeat that?
Oh, of course. I was just saying, I suppose, if I could talk, I'll talk now, that's fine, too. I posed a question like for our mission. Our mission's written right behind the participants right now, and it says a better place to live, work, and play. And I just ask them that they keep that in mind when they're thinking about these type of decisions.
Thank you.
What's the rest of the board?
What's up?
How's the rest of the board feel? Terry needs to know something. A lot of work into it, which I do respect.
Yes. Can I just mention why we started the process, the planning commission? Okay, so we started the process because of that fire that happened at the condos that if it had fired, had happened in the middle of the night, there definitely would have been a lot of people who did not get out. And there's no way our fire marshal for the whole state is going to get to these places that have these loft rooms with 14 to 20 bunks in them. And so this registry is supposed to establish rules about that, that they put in their sprinkler systems, that they have their egresses, that hopefully a devastating fire like that, you know, will not wipe out 14 people at once as that one would have done in the middle of the night. I'm sure Brendan's on the fire department, I'm sure he can speak to that. He's shown me videos of these loft rooms with bunks all the way around, like one egress and probably no sprinkler systems.
Thank you.
Somebody has their.
Lauren?
Hey, everyone. Yeah, I just wanted to respond to what the woman just spoke about, about, you know, the reason for the conversation being a fire and all of that. I just do wonder how anyone would ever enforce that. If the fire marshals can't enforce it now, what's to say that putting a rental regulation in place would ever be able to be any differently enforced? It just seems like an extra rule that we can't keep up with.
Go ahead, Terry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. The idea of the rental registry would pay for our fire personnel to be able to inspect those places and it would pay for the person at the town that would be the person that, you know, communicates with, we're talking about hiring a company and that would enforce things with fines and, you know, penalties of not being able to operate if you're not presenting a safe place for people to stay. And so this registry would, we're hoping this registry would pay for itself. A person at the fire department to get them trained and get them to be able to do those inspections, a person at the town level and a hired company to handle all the paperwork and the fines and all of that. That's all my idea of the registry for short-term rentals, not long-term rentals.
I'd like to opine.
Right, sir. What's your, what's your name?
James Wadlow.
James.
Yeah, I understand the need to for the registry. I mean, I'm a Ludlow resident. I don't actively operate a short-term out. But we're going, the costs that we're talking about to administer a registry should be very minimal. What you just mentioned was you're trying to raise funds for the greater good of the town, which essentially comes out to be a new tax. So therefore, also, it shouldn't just be on the burden of the short-term rental owners. It should be on the burden of all 2,200 plus or minus residents in the town. To, and you mentioned about the fire up there. I watched that fire, it was pretty scary. I've had a chimney fire in my house. Fortunately, I was able to clear it out and we didn't call the fire department after. Yes, my point is that a lot of chimney fires are because people don't do proper maintenance and clean them and the creosote builds up there. So now you've got that on top of it. So, you know, all goes back to the enforceability of the overall goals and the framework of this registry. So it started out as a good idea on a good-hearted health and safety basis, has really creeped in scope where it's not just registry. It's creating funds for the public good of all residents of Ludlow.
I have no problem with creating funds for the public good of residents of Ludlow. I have no problem with that. I think if you can pay for a housing authority that could help some local people afford a place in town, I think that it would be worth it for that.
That's not.
Okay, so I, can I?
That's never happened. Long way away.
Lauren.
Can I, can I say something? Hello?
Yes.
Can Terry finish first? I've finished.
Are you done, Terry?
I'm not looking at you, I'm trying to. Can people mute until they raise their hand and we can call on them, please?
Christian Joy. Am I saying that right?
Kristen, it's your time to speak, but you're on mute.
Sorry, sorry. Kristen, I, my name's Kristen Marrow. I currently live in Chester. I'm a property manager in Ludlow. I've been doing that since I was 19 and I'm almost 48. So I've worked for so many people. I just do it privately. I think that the, the fee would actually maybe level the playing field. A lot of these condos that have 15-plus bedroom or 15 bunk beds have been illegal since I started in this industry. They were illegal when I worked for Strictly Rentals for Ginny and Jerry Snyder. Like, so nothing has really changed to make them want to change. So now you have owners who are willing to play by the rules and they have to compete with other people who want to rent out their 15 bunk beds for $150 a night. So you put this fee in place and all of a sudden you sort of leveled the playing field. You have to pay to play. Now you're invested a little bit and you're going to be a little bit more willing to play by the rules and understand that someone is watching over you. I mean, it's not unreasonable at all. The money that can be made by the night covers the fees, but these places to like bend over backwards to allow these people to still be illegal from literally 1999 onward, like there's no need for it. Put the fee in place, all other towns are doing it. And the people that don't like it, they're going to fall out of the market and there's nothing wrong with that.
Thank you.
Can I, can I say something? I don't know how to put the little hand up, but I'm putting my hand up.
You're Lauren, your hand's up. I don't know.
You have your little hand. It's Astor.
Astor is a different lady. She was there before.
Okay, so I hear what the woman just said. And if you saw this and knew that this was inappropriate or illegal and wondering why it wasn't addressed, if you were a property manager, with the people that were doing the community facilities, first of all. But the presumption that all, that there are multiple people doing all of this is really unfair. Okay, I live, I can sleep 13 people and I have a zone or two units at my location. I property manage eight hosts, oh, eight guests rather, as a host. Because I don't want to run. We're talking about fire. So don't you think that hot tubs are a problem? People can drown in them. And outdoor fire pits, neither of which I have because they are a safety issue. And we're looking at making a bureaucracy for something that has no limits. You can do whatever you want to all the short-term rentals and people anytime. You can enact any rule that you want. We have no voting power. We have nothing to, we have nothing that we can do except to voice our opinion, which you can ignore. And I think in some ways has been ignored because there was a lot of negative registry commentary at the last meeting and at the meetings before that. So the fire, which has apparently, according to one commentator at the meeting I attended, there have been two fires and they were in private residences. Yes, I think people who have fireplaces should maintain them. So are we going to outlaw woodstones and fireplaces? Is that next? I mean, where does it end? And saying that you want to raise money in order to hire somebody to regulate a body of people, it's like a problem in search of, it's a solution in search of a problem. As far as fire goes, I have all my CO2 and fire alarms in all the bedrooms, et cetera. And actually, we had one that malfunctioned, we believe. Early on, when I first had the house, my daughter and her friends happened to be staying there. And, you know, it was a very loud screeching noise the way it is. You cannot not hear these things. And the fire department came and not one person thought to check the CO2 levels from the fire department. So, and I know that because one of the people who was a guest of my daughter's was his backup fireman and in Albany. And he says, nobody's going to check the CO2 here? If that's what could have been the alarm and what for? So, you know, I got a real problem with the registry because I don't think it is going to change anything. And as far as people falling off, I would, I absolutely will not register my property and I won't do Airbnb. And there are, I, if you look at the real estate listings recently, because I follow those very closely, there's one on my block that was a multi-unit. That woman owned that property for more than 20 years. She was probably fed up and getting rid of her property. And there's a, there's a place on Prospect or Pond Street. I get, I get them confused all the time. And on Main Street, and they're all multi-units. And they've probably been owned by the same people for a very long time. And they're throwing their hands up and they're saying enough already. 3% short-term rental tax targets one very specific group of individuals and it's not fair. And then the 1% options tax, which you, you know, so magnanimously get back from your state government, which I think is ridiculous. They should definitely send back money proportionate to what money gets sent in. You know, Woodstock, Ludlow, Manchester, Burlington. You're supporting infrastructure in places where nobody even lives, but.
Excuse me, excuse me. I think we're getting a little off track. We're not discussing the registry. We're discussing what the trustees want to do to pursue it. That would, the discussion of the registry, it would be at a different meeting.
Okay, well, I'm just, I carry what the comments were and that's why I'm responding to them.
So I would like, Scott? I can't read his last name. I can't read his last name.
Scott Dinhofer.
It's Dinhofer. Just to reflect on your last comment, what, my understanding is that this meeting is for public comments of the short-term rental registry. Is that correct or incorrect?
Incorrect.
That's incorrect. The trustees, we're, we're reviewing what we discussed at the public meeting and we're decide, we're deciding, trying to give the planning commission some directive as to what to bring up for the next public meeting.
So this has nothing to do with public comments in the short-term rental registry?
Wait. You're more than welcome to comment on it, but this is not an open public meeting for that discussion tonight. The date of which hasn't been set.
Okay, thank you for that. I, I don't, I'll be brief because I, I know a lot of people are wandering in lots of different directions here. I put a, myself and three other homeowners of the north end of Lake Rescue, all constructed a letter together that we posted in the Okemo Valley Community Group. I'm assuming most people here monitor that group and read it, so I don't have to rehash what we put in there. We are for people that do short-term rent our homes. We believe we do things the right way because we care about our homes. But I think one thing that's become very obvious to me through the attending the last public meeting is that there are definitely a lot of people that are abusing what they do with short-term rentals and there probably is a need for a short-term rental registry. I do believe, however, the way that this is being proposed to be paid for makes absolutely zero sense that the town feels a need for a budget that is four or five times what other towns are spending, that Dover and Wilmington together in the Mount Snow region are about the same size as our market and they are funding two towns with two inspectors with two software fees for one quarter of what this town is proposing. And I think there needs to be some transparency as to what the budget is with the $700,000 to $800,000 this registry would raise. I also further feel that as a short-term rental owner, I am paying an extra 3% to Montpelier and it'd be helpful to know to what degree the town has fought with Montpelier to get some of that money back to help pay for the short-term rental registry. Because per Lauren's who just proceeded these comments about not having any representation, this feels very much like, you know, what this country was founded on. No taxation without representation. And that's it. Those are my comments. Thank you. It's a thankless job that you guys do and I appreciate your listening.
Thank you, Mr. Dinhofer. If I may just answer real quick. I have not seen that letter and anytime you want to submit a letter for public record for us to discuss, please do so through the town and we will most certainly get it and be able to read it. So please do that in the future.
I will get it out to you tonight. Thank you.
Yes, and as far as taxation goes at a state level, I've heard this a lot. Ludlow's what's called the Gold Town and it was enacted from Bingham versus State in 1997, Act 60 and 68 was ratified in 2003. For 2022 numbers, Mr. McNamara might be able to correct me. Ludlow sent 19 or 20 million dollars up to the state and we received 3.5 million back. So I agree, we should have more money from the state and we should be able to keep more money in this town. There's not much we can do about it as a small town right now without a coalition of other towns that are interested, which is something we would like to explore. But as it currently stands, there's no recourse for us to keep that money in this town.
I'm sure you would have a lot of citizens backing to band together with other towns and pursue that.
I would highly encourage that. And as far as the fee structure, I don't think the planning commission pulled it out of thin air. I think what happened was we partnered with a company called Granicus a few years ago to study the short-term effects, the short-term rental effects in the town and use their software. And they came back and they said, you guys should charge a $600 fee because that's the average nightly rate in your town. So that was the impetus for that. I just wanted to clarify that for you. I just wanted to clarify that for you. As far as re-looking at the short-term rental, the reason why we re-looked at this is the Lister's Office was interested in gaining more information about the layout and structures of housing and how much beds you're putting in each room. The fire department was worried about safety after the fire and the planning commission was as well. So, they took on that directive. And then, I guess, my final thing is, at that public meeting, most people prefaced their comments with that, with the caveat that they were in favor of a short-term rental, but that the price was too high or it was too restrictive. Those are constructive criticisms and I'm welcome to chat about those and get into it at a public meeting. But in my recollection of that meeting on August 12th, most people prefaced their comments with support, just like Mr. Dinhofer just did. It's all chair.
I just wondered if I could speak to some of the concerns that came up that, at the public hearing? I wasn't here, I wasn't named, but I, you know, I read the minutes and I watched the video. Can I speak to some of the comments that came up that, and changes that we could make?
Yeah, of course.
Okay. So, the idea of spot inspections definitely came up. And I went on the state website and looked at that and it said spotted inspections are allowed when a danger is foreseen, like a non-functioning carbon monoxide detector or a non-functioning smoke detector. But I did email the state guy, the state fire inspector. Took a really long time to get a response, but I finally got a response. And he said that they follow the caveat that people are given a 48-hour notice before they have an inspection. So, that is a change that we could make to the document. Another change was the penalty situation. There's a lot to talk about that night. And the need for education first. So, I sent it to Brendan, I don't know if everybody got it. I think I sent it to, I think I sent it to all you guys.
Sent it to the board.
I sent it to the board, yeah. That the first offense could be education and no fines, like the first offense of, you know, somebody that didn't follow the rules about fire safety or whatever. The second offense, you know, we could start there, fining people. If they just, you know, they don't correct the problem that they have. So, I think that's a change we could make, that the first, you know, the first one is education. Sewer septic capacity, I wanted to speak to that, that, you know, they talked about they didn't want that to happen because a lot of people have invested a lot of money in sprinkler systems for their loft rooms and extra e-glasses and stuff like that. The only thing I wanted to say about that is that, when I met with Chris Callahan, who is our town lawyer, about this entire document, he said that he didn't recommend taking that off. It's only for places that have over eight-person occupancy. Because it is a legal way to stop if, you know, if somebody, like, they don't pay the fines, they don't register, they don't do anything, they still have these loft rooms. He said it's the only legal recourse you have to shut down a place like that. Is sewer and septic capacity. This is a legal way for the state of Vermont to shut down that place or the town of Ludlow, to shut that place down until it complies with safety standards. The other thing was discussed to combine the rental registries, which I've spoken very much about, that it's not a good idea. Let's keep them separate so the public can decide which one they want. Let's not put them together so that they both go down because of one or the other of them at a public hearing. So, I'd really recommend not separating them and, I mean, not putting them together into one whole rental registry. And the other reason for that too is, I've already been hearing and no one has been hearing from Deckard that now they're gonna have this whole long-term rental registry and, you know, those long terms get stuck in with the short terms. We're gonna have, we're saying we're not gonna charge the long terms because we're trying to encourage long-term rentals because of the housing crisis, which is huge in Ludlow, trying to find a long-term rental. Not putting them together because they are gonna charge us for every single one of those long terms. So, you know, to keep all that documentation. And so, we'd have to increase the price of the short terms even more to pay for the long terms, which we're not charging. So, those are just the arguments I wanted to make about the different things I've heard that were talked about after the meeting. Oh, and also, to change the fees so that, but do it by bed spaces, which is Ben's idea. If you do it by bedrooms, they'll call those loft rooms, one bedroom. And it'll have 14 beds in it. But if you do it by bed spaces, which is, you know, a bed space is, I think you've defined it as a queen size, a king size, two twins and that's one bed space. Then you have your hosted homestead, that that starts out at like $300 for a bed space with a loft with one bedroom. And then increases by like $50 as you go up to two bed spaces, three bed spaces, four bed spaces, five and six bed spaces. And then the non-hosted gets started like 400 for a loft with one bedroom and then go up to five, you know, 450 for two bed spaces, 500 for three bed spaces and so on and so on. So, the more bed spaces you have, the higher your fine would be. Not your fine, but your fee, your yearly fee. And I just want to mention one more thing. Chris Callahan suggested, when I talked over to him, talked over with him all these fees, he suggested that the first year that you give people a discount of $100 and ask them to register before June 1st, because this registry is supposed to go from July 1st to June 31st. And then, you know, you have the people in the system and then every year they just renew. And it's just a way to get everybody on board the first year. An encouragement to have it $100 left, less if they, if they sign on by June 1st of 2026. That's pretty much what I wanted to say about the issues that were brought up. Hope I didn't miss any of them.
Thank you. Chair, there's one hand raised.
Lauren?
Hey there. Appreciate the comments of the woman who was just speaking. I do just wonder about the fire safety thing. I mean, I also really believe in fire safety. I'm a nurse, I really want to protect people in the community. But I do wonder about, like, short-term rentals being the only risk. Albeit, I understand there's like houses with 15 people in it or whatever that's not supposed to have that. But there could also be long-term places like that too. I mean, we know that there's a short-term, there's a housing crisis here. And I'm fully aware that there are some people that cram too many people in a room. But I just, I don't think it's fair to necessarily pin it on the short-term rentals. I think if we're really as a town concerned about fire safety, we need to think about fire safety of all the rentals. Long-term rentals, short-term rentals, people who have lived in their house, it's really old and haven't maintained their fireplace. I mean, there's so many other places to go about that. I definitely agree with her that education as a first initiative is, I think, really important and possibly a fine after. I just don't know that having someone pay like a set fine a year is gonna solve this problem. I think you really need to go after the people who are causing the problem, which in all reality is probably pretty few. And that's, that's all I had to say. I'll just speak for myself. I asked the town for a fire inspection back in January of this year, just as a precaution. And my home is newly renovated. I absolutely don't have tons of people in it. I have a max of six or seven people. But it's now September and I haven't heard anything. So, I mean, I think there are tons of people who really want to be compliant. And while I understand you're trying to like fund someone to actually do those inspections, I'm not necessarily the one that even needs the inspection. Like, I think maybe, I don't know, random checks or like a fine if there's a problem, something like that. I mean, there's fines for noise complaints. Like, I just don't know that, like, meeting all of these fines over a single year for every short-term rental property owner is really the solution.
Thank you. Mr. McNamara, you're looking for action steps?
I just think there needs to, the board, you know, what direction are we going? I mean, and it's the same question that I would pose to the, to the select board. You know, we had a public hearing where there was a tremendous amount of feedback. And we've, you know, it's kind of been, that's what we have those meetings for, is to gather feedback, not just from the folks that are within the municipality, but from the folks that it's going to be affected by. And we got that and now it falls to the boards to determine, you know, you have a number of different options. You can proceed with it, now it was. You could make changes in accordance to the feedback you got from the, from the public at the public meeting. It could go away completely. You know, you have, it's very similar to the food truck issue. Like, we have the same type of, we're in the same type of things. And, you know, that's just, I think it's in the, you know, these, I think everyone feels that these meetings have become very tedious and contentious and it's a separation of the community is the way I feel. And that's not a good thing. But there's also middle ground all the way around. So, I just think it's kind of the consensus. So, again, am I looking for a decision tonight? No, but I think, you know, I need some direction, Terry needs some direction as to where we're gonna go with the next step. Because what will happen if we don't is, we're gonna end up back in October at another meeting, having the same discussion. So, I mean, I'm, you know, I'm kind of in the boat here where I'm, I'm, I, you know, work at the pleasure of the board. So, it's, I'm just, you know. Again, not a decision, just I think we need a direction and consensus on where, you know, there's been a lot of time, a lot of effort put into this one way or the other, so.
I think a lot of people showed up for the public meeting and most people had constructive criticism for the document. So, I would be in favor of changing the document. And I would be in favor of giving you the baton to speak with other townships. I know Mr. Dinhofer, I think, made mention of Dover, Wilmington? Is that correct?
Dover.
Killington would be one, Stowe would be another one. Most mountain towns, quote unquote, do have a rental registry and most folks at that public meeting were in favor of some sort of registry. Albeit, I think the pricing was a little too obtuse. And maybe the regulations of things. So, I would recommend contacting those other towns' managers and understanding what that looks like on a deeper level.
If it's helpful, I'm sending you the letter. And we quoted the, the number of short-term rentals and the fees in Dover and Wilmington, which to me represents one market because it's the Mount Snow market. Killington and Stowe. Killington seems to be the highest. Not quite sure, but they implemented a pretty reasonable staff, I believe. I think that's really what it comes down to is, what does your staffing look like? What are the expenses that staffing to, you know, implement this process as well as the software?
Thank you, Mr. Dinhofer. And if ever you serve Mr. McNamara, Chester has a rental registry. London Dairy has a rental registry.
Plymouth does.
Yeah, I, the planning commission did that research and shared those charts with you. I had all of them, all the ones that have registries within like a 100-mile radius from here. And we looked at all those fees in the beginning. That's where the planning commission came up with the fees and from Granicus, of course, and Deckard.
So, to me, it seems like the rental registry is a good idea for this town. What it looks like is not the current document in my, in my estimation.
Just still ciphering through all of that, you know, but I agree with you. I don't know.
Okay, I have one more hand. Scott?
Scott, if I can make a suggestion, and I agree with everybody when we speak about safety and the importance of all those things, I agree. I'm not gonna sit here and argue that. But if we really care about the safety of people in our community, why don't we do a free registry and see who we get to comply with it?
The administrative cost of it.
It's really about safety, right? There's not costs, there's a database. I'll send you my information if I'm gonna rent my house, right? We can create a database. I'm sure there's somebody in town that knows how to do that. And people can take that information and upload it, see who's gonna comply. I think most people do follow the rules and want to follow them and agree with the registry. Nobody wants to see somebody take advantage of the state of Vermont or Ludlow or other people or their safety. Like, we're all like human beings here trying to do the right thing. If you care, make it free or real low cost so you get compliance. If Stowe is $100, and no disrespect, but we're no Stowe.
We are not. Stowe keeps 12 million of their $22 million.
Killington just, but if we want to talk about Killington, they have vision. They just put in a $15 million water project. We gave our money to the state, they're giving the money back to them, all through grants. Right, so let's, let's talk about vision. Let's talk about our community's future. Thank you. I've said enough.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett. And I think we're starting to get more constructive here, which I appreciate and I enjoy everybody's input on this issue. It sounds to me that we need to start speaking with the towns directly that have instituted this and come to some sort of no-nonsense conclusion to this. And I don't feel now is the right time to set the next public meeting on this, unless you would feel differently.
I just wanted, can I just mention that I did contact the other towns? And I did tell it to the people that were administering this, these registries. I talked to the person from Chester, from Springfield, from Woodstock and from Killington that administers these registries and those ideas all went into this document that was created.
What is your thought, Ms. Nicole?
I've just ciphered so much of this, you know, just trying to cipher through it all. I've listened to a lot. I definitely, I feel like the long-term rental thing got thrown in there and there are so many rules already for the long-term rentals. And I just think it's been just thrown in there to just confuse everything on this. I think the original thought of the short-term rentals is a really good plan.
I believe you have a consensus of the board.
Okay, so.
What did you guys think of the changes that were made to the document? Sorry, I just got them to you guys the other day. Didn't even have a chance to go over them. Should we do that next one?
I don't have the document in front of me. So, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't, I haven't seen the...
I only sent it last week.
I haven't had time to process that yet. I think based on the feedback of the first public meeting on August 12th, there's some reshaping that needs to be done on that document. What you have there might be more in line. Instead of involving the planning commission, I would like the town manager to directly chat with the town managers. That would be my, uh... My thought. Ready to move forward?
Yeah.
Chair?
I'm ready. Annual Rotary Chili Cook-Off. This is just the approval for the Rotary Cook-Off. They will be holding their annual chili cook-off on October 11th, 2025, from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM, which will be held on Depot Street, right out in front of the town hall. This has been, you know, obviously a big, always a good community event. So, I encourage everyone to attend the PD Daycare blocking off the street, et cetera.
I think this is my favorite event of all year.
It might be.
I love it. Love it, love it. Great sense of community. I would make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Other business?
Can I, I just don't know what's going on with the food truck partners.
We shelved it on the 12th.
Indefinitely?
Indefinitely.
Indefinitely, yes.
Okay.
The part we don't want to talk about. Go ahead.
So, municipal manager update first. Obviously, you have in front of you, or the chair does, my letter of resignation. So, I have given that to the board. That is effective December 5th. Again, this is just more of a personal change. I thank the board for their time, you know. Coming to Ludlow was one of the best things I've done professionally. It doesn't make it easy. But again, after some self-reflection, it's time for a pursuit of different options in my career. So, you know, I thank the boards and the community for support. I'm not going anywhere. I'll be around. But again, unfortunately, that is a decision that is, you know, may not be as I found, may not be popular in Ludlow, but it is a choice for myself and my family, so.
I will always respect an individual's choice. I feel like we were very lucky to have you as a town manager for the past three years.
Three years.
I very much want to thank you.
Thank you. Much appreciated.
I totally agree with that. We would have been very blessed.
I respect your...
It did not come, the decision did not come without a lot of, it was not a, you know, a rash decision, I'll put it that way. A lot of time, a lot of thought.
Chair?
Yeah, you've done a wonderful job.
Thank you.
I love working with you.
Thank you very much.
You've had a lot of fires to put out too. And you handled it with grace, firefighter.
There's been a few.
Thank you.
Next, let's do it.
Yeah.
And everything.
Really.
Do you have a comment?
But I really like how young people like you don't stay in the job. I like that. I was the same for 40 years and I love the job.
She called you young, buddy.
I love people home where they can try different things. Good for you.
Eric?
Yeah. I'm one of those folks that is not happy about this decision. I've expressed that to Brendan directly. You know, I'd asked the board to, to deny his resignation and keep him on. And he's, he's, he's the best thing that's happened to that position in a long time in this town. You know, it's been, it's been great and, you know, if Brendan remembers the very first meeting he had, I asked him if he could accomplish one thing he could leave and that was to get in the bathroom at the transfer station.
This is true.
Mission accomplished.
I'm out.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alden.
I also would like to say I've, it's been a pleasure working with you, Brendan. You've done, done well and we're, we're going to miss you, but I also respect your, your decision, so. Mr. Corbett?
Just wanted to thank you too. I know sometimes it's a thankless job, but the community does support everything you've done and we appreciate you. Best of luck in the future.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So aside from that, just some, you know, brief, you know, updates. Paving, obviously, is almost done, just working on some, they have some of the spots with the, you know, driveways coming to the road.
Sidewalk.
The sidewalks, yep, as well as some of the, you know, the pavement markings. But all in all, ride's very nice, looks good. Five alarm 5K was with the fire department put on last, on Saturday. I think there was 180 runners, so it was a good turnout. I did not run because I didn't want to embarrass anyone, so I just stayed and cheered everyone on. But thank you to the Fire Bar and firefighter, the, and the association for putting that on. That's always a, you know, a great event. Outside of that, it's, you know, kind of business as usual in town. We're prepping for budgets that are coming up. Again, the merger for the town and the village, the vote is in mid-October, but we do have public hearings on the 17th and the 18th and then on the 1st and the 2nd of October. So I encourage people to come out to those, so.
When is the vote?
October 14th.
Yeah, I can't count. I think it's the 14th. I can't make.
It's hot here.
It is hot, yeah. That's your fever, Justin.
Just mouth breathing into this microphone all meetings.
Set date for next meeting, October 7th. October 7th.
It's Julie's birthday.
Happy birthday, you want to meet for it?
October. That's about as exciting as it gets right now, so.
We've, we've all signed warrant orders. You have those. I, I would like to have a possible executive session, briefly.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye. Thank you, everybody.